So we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is 1:02 on Thursday, March 7th. We will start our communications committee meeting. If we can go ahead and start out by introducing ourselves. At what, we'll go this way since you're not.
Andy Holm, board member.
Jim Anderson, chief operating officer.
Right.
Heidi Umblee, contractor to communications.
Uh MJ, communications, publications, and external affairs.
Katie Grant, executive assistant.
Marika Solomon, executive assistant.
Helen Lessons, board member.
Dora Wilson, board member and communications chair. And if we can have folks online introduce themselves as well, that'd be great. Maybe someone.
Yes, President Bellamy and April.
Marg- Margot Bellamy, um, board member. I forgot what I was.
Uh, April Idy, Alaska PTA president.
Thank you for being here, April. And also, uh, spoke to Carl Jacobs. Member Jacobs is excused. He had a conflict today. Thank you for reaching out. Let's go ahead and jump in to our first, second item of discussion. I'm gonna pivot over to MJ.
Uh, thanks, member Wilson. So I'm representing Tony Riley, our senior director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and community engagement. She is out of town, uh, in Akron, uh, researching the academies of, academies of Akron. The academy program there. So I am representing her. And I will do my best to fill her shoes. So here we go. You should have an electronic copy in front of you for those who are online. And then folks that are here in person, you've got a hard copy in front of you. We'll start with the community engagement update for this month. Their main event is gonna be next week. The community fair happening, uh, over spring break at Clark Middle School. The team will be providing hot meals. We've got community partners such as the Alaska Public Media, uh, SNAP Head Start, Children's Lunchbox, uh, as well as other departments here with the district providing information about our changes and assisting families signing up for services. Uh, we've got a bunch of donations, uh, that are coming in from our partners, including from Charlie's Produce and Trend Setters. Uh, we've got two, uh, delivery, uh, locations within the district. And the goal of this event, uh, is to determine, uh, logistics for longer unknown school closures and to ensure all of our families will still have access to food, given the food insecurity issue that's facing our, uh, community. Uh, this is a team effort, uh, within the district, uh, uh, a lot from our operations side of, uh, of the, um, the road here as well as our Title I, uh, teams. So, and, and Jim's here too, and that he can also, um, speak to any, um, uh, questions about the event, uh, as well. It's really, uh, from operations side of things, uh, Jim and his team took this, uh, issue, food insecurity, and created a, uh, incredible, um, community engagement outreach event, uh, with Tony and her team. And pretty excited to see what's going to, um, come out. This is, uh, a great opportunity for us to meet the need in our community. And Jim's taken the lead on this and been, uh, I think, created a really, uh, powerful event for our community.
So we started doing the planning in December, um, after Snowmageddon, when we realized when they're closed for that many days, um, what do you do, what can we do in the future for kids? Especially in food deprived areas. So we had our, our first chance to do something on a smaller scale when, uh, CLAT closed for two days because their boiler went under the fridge. And we were able to, um, you know, from 3:00 PM when we closed the school the next day, we had food at Diamond Estates the next morning, and we were able to feed about 200 kids. And so then we realized that we gotta, we gotta do better than just that. We gotta be ready for the next rural crisis. And so we really set this up, obviously to feed students, but really, um, a district preparedness for a rural event that would be a crisis level. So, um, we started looking at all the different areas around town where there's large numbers of, um, economically disadvantaged students. We looked at different schools. And this really was our first full-blown exercise, um, to, to be able to figure out lessons learned on how to engage with our community partners on short notice, long notice, um, how to build relationships. So if it is something traumatic that happens within the city and ASD, whether we should or not take the lead for something like this, um, that's really what, what was the impetus to pull this together. So we've got about 18 different tables from partner organizations around town. There's gonna be a vaccine clinic. There's, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna have a lot of different people there. I did send invite to the mayor's office, all the assembly members in each of the districts that are, um, associated because at Range View Trailer Park and Diamond Estates, we're also gonna have a significant amount of food, um, that we'll be handing out the same day. And it really is, you know, to work out some kinks on how do we coordinate? How do we prepare? What kind of, what kind of reports do we need to know what our stockage levels are of certain types of foods that would be required, um, for something like this? And how to get reports within student nutrition? So when people go home on a Friday, they know which schools have how much food. So if you have to react immediately in a crisis, you know, what are all the systems you've gotta have in place before the crisis to make sure you're ready? And, and so that's kind of how we pulled this together. It actually started with Leica McCauley, um, coming into my office saying, "I'm concerned about kids who didn't eat. What can we do about it?" And she's been a huge, huge, uh, pusher for this event. And then, of course, obviously, Dave Mayo Kelly and, uh, and others, as, as this grew and got bigger, we pulled them in. So it is gonna be a good event. There are gonna be city, state, and volunteer organizations there. And, and I think, uh, you know, ultimately, we would want the, the city to look at grants for things like this, um, for Christmas break or other periods where we have big absences where there are populations of children in need. But obviously, we wouldn't, on our own, wouldn't be able to afford that kind of program. But, you know, we have student nutrition people, bus drivers involved, um, a lot of people on the instructional side are now involved. And honestly, when you look at bus drivers' nutrition, those people wanna work, um, when school's not in session, many of them. Uh, we have way more volunteers than we, we thought we would get. So it's actually good for our staff as well as the community. But, uh, hopefully, it's, it's a good event. You never know who's really gonna show. But I think it's gonna be pretty, I think, quite a few.
That's amazing. How are community, how are community members hearing about this?
Uh, we're putting out flyers and it's going throughout the communities of the areas. Obviously, we didn't wanna invite the entire city of Anchorage to converge on Clark because we don't have that much food. So we sent it out to all the schools that are within that area. Junior has been involved, talked to him a couple times, and he knows the community really well, and he's been spreading the word. There's a food bank in Mountain View. I don't know if you've been there, but the two ladies who run it are amazing. We've, we've been spreading it, but we didn't wanna spread it too early because, again, this is supposed to be also an emergency exercise rehearsal. So we just started this week, but, uh, or last week. But, you know, we've got hundreds we know are planning on showing.
Um, thank you. I'm not part of your community, but, um, so I toured the ASD, um, food, sorry, student nutrition center. It's not a student nutrition warehouse, but it's a, it's a whole big refrigerator and cooking complex. So it's the food that's being provided, food that is coming through our storage or, I mean, uh, not storage, but our, our storage capabilities, or is that through Charlie's?
Well, this time we're on purpose using central, we're using the central kitchen on purpose.
Okay, so we're gonna be serving food that ASD has cooked and prepared?
Um, yes, and then it'll all be heated up at Clark. And what we wanted initially, it did start about food. But then we realized that, you know, people are gonna come in and some of it's gonna be high school kids bringing their brothers and sisters. And, and we didn't want them to feel like it was, you don't wanna soup kitchen atmosphere, right? So then we started saying, "What do we do to make it fun?" And then it went from fun to, uh, obviously, it, it really expanded quickly once you go down that train.
Yeah. So give me a visual of, like, what you're experiencing.
So you walk in into the main atrium before the kitchen or before the cafeteria. The hallway down the right, I think we've got five classrooms with different people in it. There'll be mental health, um, supports as well. So if someone comes in and needs help, um, there'll be some private areas for those individuals. And then all the other types, like the vaccine clinic, you're not gonna mix with anything else. And the SNAP, TANF, WIC signups need a little privacy to talk to them. So it'll really be that first hallway to the right will be where the stations will be set up and then some stuff in the atrium and then the rest in the NPR.
So lots of community resources, opportunities for families to?
Yes, we wanna, and we are gonna feed family members too because, um, we would. In a, in a real emergency, we don't think that's really gonna cost a lot. But, um, we really wanted, at least our mindset was, what do you do in a crisis? And not, you know, what would we do? We'd feed anyone who walks in the door with kids. Now, we did ask the food bank to set up a mobile distribution site outside the school because we know that within the community, there'll be people trying to come into the school who maybe don't have children at all. And then we'll escort them over to where they can still get food. And there's gonna be backpacks with food for them to take home, um, bags with other stuff from Charlie's Produce and others. Um, I, I was surprised, frankly, how, how many people jumped on really, really quick. It was, it's been, uh, it, it'll be a good event. Also, I'll be there from nine to three. We'll do setup at nine, start at 10:00. And then at the both trailer parks, um, those have been coordinated because we had an issue with CLAT at Diamond Estates when we tried to feed the kids because we didn't coordinate as well as we should. But this time, I think we've got every base covered, so.
That's awesome. Do you guys have translators available?
I don't know how many ELL people are gonna be there, but they were also brought in, so I know there'll be some supports. Because we know if they're trying to do SNAP, TANF, WIC signups, if they don't speak English as a, or very well, then they would need help. So. So we do.
So I'm gonna reiterate, it is Wednesday, March 13th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Clark Middle School.
Yes, and also at Diamond Estates and Range View, um, also from 10:00 to 2:00, but those will be mobile feeding. Because there's about 300 kids, three something at Diamond Estates and a little bit under 300 at Range View. So we figured those are, those are pretty big groups that, um, you know, we actually fed them there a couple times during COVID because they can't get to the nearest school even when we had food, and it took a while for us to figure that out. So, yeah, it's really, hopefully, we'll have a great AAR afterwards and figure out how do we do this as a city and not just like an Anchorage school district initiative.
And, and when you talked about numbers at Diamond Estates and Range View, those are students, ASD students? And repeat how many at each?
It's a, a little over, it's about 300 plus at Diamond Estates and a little under 300 at Range View. So we'll have, we'll have several hundred meals at each location. So, yeah, I think it'll be a good event.
And did anybody else have a question online or comment?
Yes, it looks like Kate will have her hand.
Hi, April.
Hi, um, so when you're doing these events, are you, or have you thought of doing, like, collecting contact information? Or like, people signing up for like text alerts when, like, an emergency occasion pops up that they know that that is gonna happen and where to go? Or is it just kinda a one-time announcement?
Oh, no, thi- this is a deliberate effort to build the communication pathways for future events. And so all of the agencies that will be showing up have been on a Google Doc for a couple months now as we've been getting information. It'll be after the AAR, though, that we meet again and talk about what is our next rehearsal or event, um, however you wanna look at it, and look at enlarging it. As soon as the flyer went out last week, we started getting other organizations that wanted to join in on this. But, but you've gotta have the structure to be able to coordinate it during, and, and it is spring break, so, um, some of them we, we think will be really good for the next time we do something. But, but this time, we're kind of at the, at our limits as to what we think we can comfortably control and provide supports to, because a lot of those people need supports when they come in to help. They still need people to help them get set up. They still need whatever it is they need. And so we have the structure built around supporting those folks. So at this point, we're really not adding additional people. Uh, we cut that off about three days ago, so.
That's really awesome that our community organizations are stepping up on that hotel.
And what about, like, for the families? How will they be notified, um, like, in future events? You know, well, for example, this one, and then any other ones, are they, is it just gonna be like a news blast through ASD? Or are they personally contacted or?
It'd be a combination of Blackboard, of course, because you can go to any particular schools, you can go to whole communities. But we would also have, like, we'll have Alaska Public Media there all day, and they're gonna set up and they're gonna be a good conduit for us to reach out to the community in the future. But this one, for every good reason, we didn't want to start advertising it two months out. Because it really wasn't the intent of being able to feed the most needy in a, in a reaction kind of way, right? Otherwise, and you would have a lot of people in the community, both supporting and, and against it, especially as you're talking about budget cuts and everything else. But, um, fortunately, we can use Title I money, and we are. Um, there's enough leftover to cover this. So, but trying to explain that to people who don't understand why you're in a budget deficit and yet you're feeding people, it really didn't, it wasn't helpful for a lot of things, really. Um, we've got the Title I money. All the staff will be paid out of that, that are, that are working that day. You know, but in the future, again, it really ought to be a citywide effort and not an ASD effort. And so grants and things like that coming from the municipality, I think, would be, and that's what I'll be bringing up in the, the, uh, AAR. I've talked to the city manager quite a bit over the last month or two. He knows that's where I'm headed. And obviously, you know, we'll have assembly members there, and I'll be talking to them as well on Wednesday about how does this expand to, um, really, how do you take care of the community?
Well, and with the PTAs and, you know, other parent groups, you know, this could even be a good opportunity for them to come in and volunteer to help with the, these kind of events. Because a lot of people, they need volunteer hours, or there's just a good way to give back and serve the full community, not just their local schools.
Well, we knew that we couldn't feed the entire city of Anchorage on Wednesday, March 13th. So we, we did really kind of try to limit it to these three geographic areas for this first time. And then, you know, everything, every good idea, if it works, when it works, grows. But, um, if you go, we, we, we couldn't have pulled off during spring break with no staff working, um, something where we invite the city into our schools. That wouldn't, that wouldn't have been a good idea. The AAR would have been horrible.
It's so smart to build, to build.
We need to find out what do we do wrong, and what do we need to improve on? And then as you do it, you expand out, but you don't start with, you know, everybody.
You know, uh, Madam Chair, if I might? It, I think it's a, it's an awesome idea. It reminds me of those tabletop activities we used to have, uh, i- relative to how to respond to an emergency in general. But I think having food at the core of this, uh, I, I just think it's a very unique way for us to gather a lot of good data, um, and, and build on that, uh, for when there are, when we have to, um, you know, something happens that really, wh- where we just need to, uh, feed kids like uber fast. I, I think it's great. And I, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I have it on my calendar for, um, the afternoon of the 13th at Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else have any more questions, comments? No, thank you. I'm gonna pivot back to Jada.
Yeah, cool. Uh, thanks, Jim. Thanks, member Wilson. The additional events, uh, that we got from community engagement, uh, for the rest of March is we've got our NAACP Education Committee, uh, on, next, uh, in two weeks, uh, on Tuesday on March 19th. That'll be over at, uh, Lauter Carols. Uh, and then, um, later on in the month, we've got our Multicultural Concerns Advisory Committee, MECCAC, uh, on, uh, March 28th from 6:00, 8:00 here at the Ed Center. Uh, you also have, uh, with you, uh, the calendar for the fourth quarter when it comes to, uh, community engagement, where we've got, uh, Jay Bear Student Advisory, uh, Native Advisory, and, and so on. Briefbacks to, uh, to.
Awesome.
And that's what I got from, uh, from Communication.
Nice. And, and Communications updated, of course. I'm gonna pivot right back to you.
Yeah, so I'm gonna transition over to Academies of Anchorage, uh, where we have, uh, our portrait, uh, our final portrait of a graduate for review for this, uh, committee, uh, for, uh, President Bellamy. Uh, we also have, uh, our Y statement as well, uh, for review. Uh, Dr. Johnston is, Johnson is, uh, in Akron with the rest of the team, uh, taking a review of that, uh, program there again. So I am, uh, wearing her hat today.
Wow, they have done some work on it.
Yeah, President Bellamy, I, I guess I pivot over to you, uh, since this is, uh, uh, the document that you requested for review.
Right, well, as you can see, this has grown since the, the one I have hanging on my wall back here. I know you can't see the one on my wall. But, um, we did, I, I just wanted the committee to, uh, know and see the final product, project, uh, product uh, of the Portrait of a Graduate. Uh, because this, this document, it will come before the board, uh, to, uh, for approval, or for adoption, whatever, however we wanna look at it. But we have built our, we have used this document to formulate and revise our goals. And, um, I just wanted to make sure every board member had an opportunity to see it before it comes before us. And that's the same with the Y statement. I think we can do them both at the same time. And I think the Y, the Y statement is probably, uh, the newest. I mean, we, we really have been pretty keyed into the Portrait of a Graduate for months now. Uh, but this is the Y, this is our Y statement, um, that has been finalized as well. So, uh, just wanted to make sure if there were questions, we can either answer them or we can get back to you on them if we don't know the answer to them.
I, I do wanna throw out there that there's been an incredible amount of work and input from industry, community partners, nonprofit, from teachers, from students at the community convening to develop the, the work that was done here with the Portrait of a Graduate, with the Y statement. So it is a very, um, universal, there's been some serious universal input on, in this process. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there because it wasn't something that was just developed by one person. There was, I mean, 300 people in, in each of the convenings, um, that had input. And then it was changed multiple times in that process. But the, the staff did an amazing job developing, taking all of that information and really putting it on one sheet of paper that was, uh, from all of that input. So it looks beautiful.
Yeah, thank, I'll piggyback off of that. Uh, we've been having, um, really robust conversations about how we approach this, uh, project. And, uh, we've done an intentional lean into community and making sure that community is part of the conversation and in some ways leading the conversation. And so we honor that, um, community commitment. And so I think, to your point, that's a reflection in this, and that also will be a reflection in the May 1st event that we have planned when we announce the academies for August.
Okay. Question, uh, MJ, you may know and you may not know, um, I know we're getting a new, uh, CEO for United Way. Do we, um, anticipate any, uh, I mean, are we still, because they have really, uh, carried a lot of weight here with our, with this project. I mean, I don't, I think whoever they get with, with, whoever they select would buy, you know, would be, uh, supportive. But I was just curious as to your thoughts.
President Bellamy, just at our steering committee, gosh, was that last week? I think that was last week. I spoke with the current interim, United Way, um, position is, but, uh, and he said they have not started that, quite started that process, so he, he is not expecting a replacement for, um, well, at least a couple weeks, if not a couple months. Uh, but they did hire.
The job, the job is advertised, so I, I mean, I've seen the advertising, but you're right, it'll take a couple of months. You're right.
Um, but they did hire, uh, the position.
Yeah, I mean, it's, President Bellamy, is your question about just the change in leadership at United Way? And how that might impact our, our sponsorship, partnership with them?
Yeah, because see, I see their name on the bottom of this Y statement, and I'm what, and I'm just curious as to, um, I guess I'm curious as to why their name is there. But, but that triggered a question as to, um, because I think this represents the think, the, the thinking of the entire group, right? But, but with their name being there, I'm just one, wondering if anybody foresaw any way that, uh, any, any, uh, downside to not having a CEO for United Way for a while. I know they'll have an interim. And I know the interim supports this work.
President Bellamy, I'm gonna let, um, pivot to Dr. Bryant so he can talk about the conveners a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, because this is a great question, Madam President. In short, as, as we recall, United Way took on that leadership role as the convening partner. So that's why their logo is featured on all of our public-facing documents. Because they truly are taking the largest leadership role of all of our great partners. What we didn't anticipate was the CEO transitioning out. So of course, there's always going to be some question marks. But I will say, we have strong signals that they're still, um, on the same page. Um, you know, their vice president has been a huge supporter of this. Their interim CEO's been at all of our steering committee meetings, has been a, a huge, um, supporter. And then, um, s- right before the CEO rolled off, I actually presented to the United Way Board about this, and they're also really committed. And then the fourth really strong signal is they've actually, um, either posted and/or hired, or at least posted, and they've hired for a full-time position just for, um, the ASD academies.
Oh, okay.
I anticipate we're going steam ahead. Now, um, they have some skin in the game, so things are looking.
Okay, thank you. That, that really was, uh, uh, more of a, my thought. I, I just didn't know how that was gonna work or if we needed to plan, have a fallback plan or a contingency plan or whatever. But it sounds like we're, we're good. So I'm good. Thank you.
It was, it was a huge, it, it, there was a lot of conversation, I know, um, before United Way chose to accept being one of the conveners. And so it's, it's been quite a process, so I, everything, I, is they're completely on board. Do you have any?
No, I had, that, those are the two, uh, items from, uh, the Academies of Anchorage for this committee.
Oh, perfect. Does anybody else have any questions, comments about? I see member Lessons.
Um, it's a, it's a not fully formed, um, thought, so urge yourselves. I think one of the questions that I'm certainly receiving and have a little bit is, um, families who have full intentions for their students to enroll in college are likely in the minority of, you know, graduating, or graduating students. I mean, the data shows that 20% of our students are graduating from a four-year college. But for their families who are very concerned that the academy's initiative may not align with what they envision their student to need to be college-ready. Does that make sense? And I feel like that's a concern that needs to be addressed somewhere, maybe repeatedly.
And if I may, I, I think the good news is that this is more of a marketing communications issue versus the program issue. Putting on my Dr. Johnson hat as well. A huge champion that a lot of the things that students love about their education will remain the same, whether it's taking advanced placement classes, taking foreign languages, if they're in an immersion program. Really what we're doing is, you know, asking all of our students to take at least three CTE courses that are aligned to a pathway, which is essentially an industry. And let's take healthcare, for example. Within healthcare, yes, we'll be preparing the bulk of our students to directly enter into the workforce, you know. yes, we'll be preparing the bulk of our students to directly enter into the workforce, you know, in some sort of, you know, direct, uh, you know, from high school to career type role. But those could be stackable into something that you could finish in, uh, community college or here at UAA in medical school and so on and so forth. So we're not going to take away students' opportunities to enroll in advanced placement courses, to take those college preparatory courses. I think it'll really strengthen students' aptitudes and exposure to things that excite them. Um, and that was one of the things that I personally looked for when we visited Nashville, um, because they have college preparatory high schools, they have international baccalaureate high schools. And I've seen some strong examples of embedding that college prep culture through the lens of workforce and project-based learning. So I think we just need to market and communicate that better.
I, I think that that maybe is, there's an ask somewhere in my question.
Yes.
Help reassure parents whose students, I mean, that with the family's intention is that they are giving something for secondary, uh, post-secondary education, that this is not going to be an obstacle to that larger trajectory.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, that also adds to the conversations that we had even today about the graduation requirements. Because there is a lot of value in unlocking extra courses for students to take during the day. So they could take even more advanced courses or engage in other electives that could prepare them to be successful in college, but it wouldn't be because of the academies. I think that if we structure this well, students across the board will receive better advising and make better choices, including college. So again, um, that's something I'd like for the team to address with the full board during our work session. At our next board meeting, it'll be all on CCL, because I'd love for us all to, to be assured that this isn't just a vocational program. It is, but, um, we recognize we have incredible college prep programs that aren't going to fall by the wayside because of this. They'll enhance.
There, there, there are many aspects that I'm excited about. One of them is the, um, enhancing the, the relationships with our business partners, with our industry, with our nonprofits, so, so that our students have a better connection. So it's really bringing those partners on board. So those, the students have better opportunities for internships or on-the-job training or just learning about what particular industries or entities do so that they have that connection. That networking is a huge component, um, into the success of our students after they leave school. So I'm really excited about many aspects of that. So I, I know we'll hear about it, lots of it, next meeting.
Need to market it better. So I take the point.
But I, 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 I heard that as well. Um, and I, I, I tend to reassure our families, but I, I agree that it needs to come from the district. So, yeah. Any other questions, comments on CCL? Anybody online? We're good. Okay. Um, well, that's actually, MJ, do you have anything else that you want to add or?
About the topic or about the agenda?
About both.
I am.
Because we're at the end of the agenda, but I.
I have completed the Academies of Anchorage portion of our agenda.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna move over to the other two big projects that we've got, uh, uh, on deck for August of this year. And, uh, the district is contracted.
President Bellamy, I'd like to say.
President Bellamy, did you have something?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to, um, ask if we could give, uh, April a, a couple of minutes to talk about, uh, it took, first of all, welcome her, because this is her first, uh, meeting, uh, first PTA rep we've had since we adjusted our, uh, revised our, uh, uh, policy. So I was wondering if there was time on the agenda to give her a few minutes?
Absolutely. I have, I, I actually wrote her into my agenda, but I would stop now and do that if you'd like, of course.
Okay, because she's all the way in DC.
Goodness. So President Bellamy, um, you had mentioned the change to, uh, the board policy. Can you maybe give a quick overview for anybody?
Oh, yeah. The change was to, um, add a representative of the state PTA, uh, uh, organization, make them a, I, I forget what the term is, but they are non-voting member of the, our communications committee. Um, and so, uh, uh, that, uh, that's what, that's the policy I'm talking about. I mean, we did, probably about a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago.
And, and apologies, um, Heidi, I had, I, I put, I should have put you on the first thing on my agenda. I put you last thing on my agenda, but, um, please welcome and introduce yourself again. That'd be fantastic.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, I know I missed last month's meeting. Um, like, uh, Bellamy said, I am in DC. Uh, I was here for the National PTA Legislative Conference, um, where we went yesterday to Capitol Hill to speak to our senators and congresswomen about family engagement or increasing family engagement, which is kind of why I am part of, um, you know, kind of approached and was approached to for this committee, um, to get parents at the table com, you know, regarding communication, as I know ASD and school districts around the state and the country are working to improve, um, family engagement. Um, conversations yesterday with both our senators and congresswomen went pretty well. There's, um, I'm hoping to see some further, um, funding increasing for state family, uh, engagement centers. And I know Alaska was just awarded a grant last year uh, for family engagement. And I've recently, I'm part of the, it's called the Family Advisory Board. Um, unfortunately, I'm gonna miss their meeting tomorrow as I'm traveling, making my way back home. Um, and by the way, I'm sitting here, National Harbor in the sixty, what, high fifties with sunshine, which is why I'm not turning on video, because I know what it's like back home. Um, but being, you know, I am happy to see, you know, that districts and, um, especially ASD, seeing as I have a senior in, um, he goes to Diamond High School, but, you know, seeing that parents are, you know, slowly coming to the table to, you know, have our voices heard and be there for our, our children. Um, I'm not sure what else to say today, seeing as this was my first meeting and I wasn't sure if I was gonna be able to get on and I couldn't find a quiet location to get on, so I had to find a park bench.
April, could you talk a little bit about the resource sharing you, we, we were texting, emailing about?
Yes, so, um, National PTA, and I am working on getting some, you know, exact, uh, verbiage from National PTA. The National PTA, six years ago, has been working with, um, uh, um, the government to form these resources for family engagement. Um, it works with the national standards as well as the four Cs and the, the resources are really helpful and with them already being used across the, um, the country, other states with their family engagement centers. And now that Alaska has one after, you know, quite a few years from, my understanding is the last time Alaska had a family engagement center, it ended up turning into just giving out diapers, where this go-around, it's gonna be more of the resources, you know, more for families that's not the diapers. Um, so by reaching out and working with National PTA, um, using those resources of family engagement that has already been developed and ready to go would make, instead of recreating everything, would make the process a smoother transition as well as it's coming more from the parent's point of view and not as much as from, you know, like the state school districts, that kind of thing.
Cool. Thank you. Again, thank you for joining us and thank you for taking the time. I know it's hard to travel and jump on meetings and all of that great stuff. And please, I, I, actually, I sent you a text as well. Not sure if you received it. I, I believe you did, but, uh, if you have anything that you want to share, you know, off scenes too, please let me know.
Will do. Thank you.
MJ. We're, we're gonna go and pivot back to.
Oh, great. Okay, cool. Uh, April, welcome. Uh, I, uh, the National Harbor is, uh, in my, uh, childhood experiences. That's where I'm from. So, uh, I'm a little jelly as I visualize where, where that's going in the cherry blossoms and all that stuff this time of year. Um, I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to, uh, we've adopted her back into, uh, the ASD family after being gone for a hot spell. Um, we have contracted with Heidi Emlee of Emlee Communications. She, uh, used to do this role back in the day. So I'm super honored to have her on the team. Um, I couldn't, uh, think of a better person to take on uh, these two important projects, which are, uh, school start times and the middle school move in terms of making sure that the communications um, are solid, both internal and, uh, external. So, um, I've asked her to join us, uh, this afternoon to brief this committee on, uh, our communications plans, uh, for both, um, projects and then, um, take the time. So Heidi, more resource.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me join you today to talk about this. It's actually fun to be back in the district and talk about all the good things that students are doing. So first, we're gonna talk about the start times. So as MJ mentioned, I was brought on board to help make sure that we are communicating this out and reaching everyone, um, not just in the district, but across the community because it's such an important issue. So, uh, what's being passed around is the communication plan for start times, talking about how we are going to communicate the messages and then where. So we're starting the rollout on this now and putting together a lot of the materials. And then we're really going to, um, blanket the community moving forward, not just the ASD community, but the broader community because of the far-reaching impacts that it has. So, um, we've created a flyer that is, uh, being passed around at all community events, including the one Mr. Anderson was talking about earlier. Uh, that's gonna happen next week and we'll have posters as well. And in fact, at the community event next week, we're not only passing it out to attendees, but we are going to be giving it to the community partners and then ask that they hang the posters in their offices and share it with their clientele as well. And that's something that we're gonna be doing with businesses and organizations across the community to really get the word out. Uh, we did send a postcard home to all ASD families that I believe hit mailboxes last week. And our most important message right now is just the whole start planning now. Think about now how this is going to impact your childcare, your transportation, your before and after-school activities, because we don't want people to wait until August and then realize they don't have any of those things. So this is the message that we're really pushing out and we're gonna be working with outreach to the business community to talk to them about it too, because it's going to potentially impact them as their employees are looking for, um, schedule changes or shift adjustments. We are working very closely with the Alaska After-School Network and with, uh, Thread Childcare, um, Network to communicate these messages. And they're gonna be making a lot of adjustments in how they provide services. Many of them are going to stop providing before-school care. This is a very big concern to a lot of families. And after our postcard went out, which they said was very helpful, they received a lot of families contacting them, um, very concerned about what they were going to do. And part of it, they said, was really just alleviating some of the concerns and talking through it. So for example, elementary schools on Tuesday and Fri, through Friday will start at 8:00 AM, which is an hour earlier. But they were hearing from families about how am I going to do this and get to work at 8:00 AM if I don't have before-school care? So just talking them through it and having them realize that they will be dropping off their children at school before they get to work, whereas now there's a half-hour buffer for after they get to work. So just talking them through it and helping them realize that a lot of those elementary families will actually be dropping off their students before work and it won't impact those who are starting work at 8 o'clock. So it's just really alleviating a lot of those concerns and having those one-on-one conversations. But obviously, there will be a larger impact to many other families. And so that's really what we're trying to communicate out now. Um, we are putting together lots of social media, um, graphics and plans to have schools share, to have businesses share, and really have a large partnership in terms of people sharing our information. So it's not just us trying to push it out through our normal avenues, but really connecting with everyone in the community. We hope to speak with rotaries, um, other businesses or businesses and organizations. We have, for example, a meeting with Northern Bank scheduled, um, in about a week and a half, just so we can talk with their leaders about how they can best support their employees when they're helping employees navigate this, employees who have parents in the school district. And that was at their request. And we're also going to kind of use them to help figure out how to best message with businesses as they are, um, a large player in the community and just make sure that we're providing them the information that they need so that they can communicate with their families. And we're also meeting with the military to help talk them through that as well as, um, the move to middle school for sixth graders, which I can talk about in just a moment. But I wanted to pause right there and see if you guys had, um, any questions about what we're doing with school start times. Again, uh, we are just starting the massive push out, but really trying to hit hard the start planning now message.
Number lessons.
Um, sorry, oh. Okay, I'll speak real quickly. Um, so one, maybe I'm reading ahead while listening to you, which is probably inappropriate and I should be focused on you only, but you put something in front of me. Um, one, a couple of thoughts for Anchorage community at large, um, adding in the community count of the Federation of Community Councils. I mean, board members are assigned community councils, but if, you know, you're able to connect with the Federation itself, you know, central communication is probably fantastic.
Absolutely.
Um, adding in, you know, legislative legislators and our assembly partners, um, would be a great addition. Um, and then medical partners, and I, I say that, my, my husband is in medicine and, um, you know, earlier, uh, start times for elementary students might mean that, uh, local healthcare providers, you know, wanna target setting their appointments for younger children, you know, after 2:00 PM. So there's a little bit more time in their afternoon. So it just, there might be some, a helpful, you know, we have fewer kids missing school to go to the doctor for their well-child appointment. Um, so just lots of interesting ways, which you conceptualized, and just a couple of more ways to partner with different community stakeholders. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Um, I will add medical partners as a subset in the business community, but that's definitely something they we're trying to encourage businesses to consider in terms of do they need to make adjustments to their own schedules and not just their employees making adjustments to schedules. So thank you for putting that out.
When, when we talk about the, our, our external ASD student and families, I just wanna make sure, and Heidi can speak for it as well. The other Heidi, sorry.
I think her last name is.
Heidi.
Heidi.
Heidi, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
For the record, I call the same.
The, uh, um, PTOs and PTAs, just to make sure, because I know they have separate communications, or I believe they have separate. It's been a little while since I've had little ones, but I believe they have separate communications as well, just to, so we can communicate in as many different ways as possible.
Yes, thank you. I am building a running list of all the people. And to, uh, be quite honest, I added them earlier this morning. So there are some people that are not on the list initially. And so I do appreciate the feedback to make sure that we do reach them over the next couple of months. So.
And I, I think there was someone online, Margaret.
April, it was April.
Oh, it was April. April, did you have a comment or question next?
I do. So with the communication, um, Alaska PTA is able to reach all the local PTAs. We don't have access to PTOs because they don't report to us. Um, so anything you guys are needing to give out, um, besides just to schools, um, can be sent to me and I will get that sent out to all the, the local PTAs, um, in our, you know, in our circle. And then, um, as you're doing the, you know, getting the marketing out there regarding these, um, start times and just helping those parents understand, like, there will be some help, you know, prior to those start times. Um, what about doing like the meet and greets or like coffee with the school board or whatever to help, you know, get that information and just make these families feel a little bit more comfortable? Because watching on Facebook and these mom groups, um, just seeing them like frantically trying to find childcare and then, you know, there's gonna probably end up being like a swarm of, you know, daycare centers popping up or, or babysitters that, are they really qualified to be taking, you know, care of these kids? So is it gonna end up causing issues with safety, you know, during that times? But so by offering, you know, these meet and greets, just to kind of help these parents feel a little bit more comfortable with these changes.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's a good point. This morning, uh, when I was speaking with the Alaska After-School Network, um, leader and as well as the Campfire CEO, they were kind of voicing very similar concerns to that. And we had talked about, um, working with principals to, um, message those types of things with. And we had talked about working with principals to message those types of things with parents, because we do know through research that principals and their child's school are the most trusted sources of information. So we committed to, or I committed to helping creating some talking points and information for principals to share with their families around that over the next couple of months.
And President, I'm sorry, April, did you have any else that you wanted to add?
No, and this might be a good opportunity too, during like the PTA, PTO meetings is, you know, having someone from ASD attend those meetings to share that information as well. But besides that, that's all I have.
Thank you. And President Bellamy, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, I just have a, my, my question has been answered. My question had to do with the talking points. My comment just had to do with, hey Heidi, welcome back. Miss you. And I can't see you in that room, but I'll see you later. Thank you guys.
Thank you. It's great to be back. Thank you.
Member lessons, did you have?
I did. I don't know if I raised my hand, but you intuited it. We certainly are getting emails still from parents concerned about secondary sports schedules. You know, thinking that the start time is going to mean a radically delayed onset of high school sports. And the reality is that our buses may actually be available earlier in the day because they're not going to be hung up on elementary. So anyways, my point is, can we, I mean, there's a target audience, certainly of known student athletes from, from this current year and their coaches. And perhaps we could reach out to them now, soon to say, this is what we know about, you know, what the fall cross-country season might look like. Or timing, you know, how timing for basketball games might change or might not change because, you know, all the elementary buses that we've been waiting for are now actually going to be available when your child gets out of school. So we can, you know, your kid's not going to be running on the trails in the dark is the messaging that should get out.
Yep. Okay. So I actually have heard similar things about sports schedules. I don't know if that's sorted out yet, but I will add it to my to-do list because I agree with you, that is an important target audience to reach, because that is a lot of questions that people have. You know, what happens immediately after school? Is that going to happen? Is it going to be later? Are they going to shift it to early mornings? So yes, all those questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that plays into the FAQ section of the page where that's a working space. And so we'll take that, research that.
Do you guys have more to add, please?
Going? Okay, here's another one to go around the room. Thank you. So I'm also supporting the communication for the sixth graders move to middle school. And you'll find in that communication plan that's going around, we're doing many of the similar things, but generally it's for a much smaller targeted audience, right? You've got the current fifth and sixth graders as well as the middle school communities and the elementary schools that are impacting. But then also it's good information for the broader community to have. So much of this communication is really coming from the school. So it's coming from the middle schools into their feeder elementary schools that will be receiving the students. That's where the most communication's coming in. And then the district is working to support those principals to make sure that they have everything they need to communicate that out. And then we are working with the broader district community as well as just the overall community in general. So we are creating flyers and social material for that. But for the most part, the bulk of the people impacted are receiving direct communication from the middle schools. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have with that. We are also talking with the military base. I should have mentioned that as all of their sixth graders are moving off base, because the elementary schools on base will be K-5 now. And so we've started that communication and we've got on some of their schedules to present to their leadership and create customized flyers specifically for military families to address that.
I'm very happy to hear that because there were a lot of questions from base families about the move to middle school. What school they can go to and all of that. MJ, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a, a little bit more about that is, so we had in, just to huddle with our counterparts over at Jay Baron, have identified a couple of base starting next month. Outreach to community and leadership to the points that Heidi has made reference to these projects. And then we'll do some re-engagement with them as we get closer to the start of the school year as well.
Awesome. Thank you. And did we have any questions, comments online? Member lessons? Okay, then we're good. Please keep presenting.
Okay, I think I am done. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just to also talk about Heidi. So we initially brought her on to manage the new curriculum in reading as well as the Alaska Reads Act implementation. And so what we created was the Reading for Life project. And so that was what we brought Heidi on initially. As we moved forward, we realized that we would need additional support with the school start times project and the middle school move. And given Heidi's institutional knowledge and experience with this district, she was able to move pretty quickly in getting these projects off. So really want to thank her for coming on board because she's doing more than what we initially talked about. And she was happy to help right when we asked and pretty pleased with the two communications plan that we have in front of you guys.
And I want to thank the communications team in its entirety because I know the board has put forth a lot of wonderful changes. The district has put forth a lot of amazing changes, but it is a lot of change for our families. So that communication is essential.
Do you want to talk to them about our catchphrase? We're sort of, sort of working on to message a lot of initiatives occurring at the same time.
Well.
I put him on the spot.
You did, because I'm in gym zone with the other project of what can I, or, or is many. So I'm, so with that, I, I, I'm leaning into the start planning now. That's kind of where I'm at with, with that. And so the intention is, you know, we've got our families focused on the successes of this school year. But knowing what is lying ahead, we're trying to get in front of them to really get their mind to start planning now, just because of what lies ahead. Because after we, and this school year, we go through summer in Alaska and everybody, you know, majority of our, our community disengages during the summer. And so we see what happens in the middle of July and it's all, it's a, just like, I can't say what I'm saying in my head, but it's like, and then it's just on like Donkey Kong. And so what we're trying to do is get ahead of that and get it in front of people now so they can start planning now. And so that's really where we're leaning into, not just with these two projects, but also with the Academy's of Anchorage.
No, I appreciate that very much because the, the one thing we don't want is for parents to really, any parent to not have heard about any of these changes, but between when it happened and, and beginning of school year, first day of school, right? It's, so I appreciate all that work.
Yeah, you're going to, that start planning now is you're going to, you're going to hear a lot of that. It's just to really subconsciously get people, our families and our staff in that zone. And there's, I mean, we've talked about the external, but the, there is a, a strong internal plan associated with these projects as well, because staff have to have that information.
No, that's awesome. Thank you. And we're, we are right at two o'clock. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add? Any comments, questions? And April, again, thank you for joining us. I appreciate you jumping in, especially since you are on East Coast time. That's, that's always quite a time change for me. So I think we're good to adjourn.
I do want to point out the green in the room. Thank you, Member Holloman, for getting the memo.
The green, oh.
Oh.
I missed the memo.